That vehicle left with its trunk open, you may notify Washington County.
Go to the parking lot!
That vehicle left with its trunk open, you may notify Washington County.
Go to the parking lot!
That vehicle left with its trunk open, you may notify Washington County.
Go to the parking lot!
That vehicle left with its trunk open, you may notify Washington County.
Go to the parking lot!
That vehicle left with its trunk open, you may notify Washington County.
Go to the parking lot!
We don't have the minutes yet for the May, do we?
Well, we just decided that there wasn't a BZA meeting in May. We think it might have been April that we had the last one.
Okay.
So...
It could have been.
We'll just defer approving those until the next BZA.
BZA, that's fine.
Okay.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order, the BZA, and we have two variances being requested today. Travis, is that right? Both of them are gonna be...
Right.
Okay. I guess we'll start with Tony Boyle's.
And then I'll swear here.
Stand up here, go up here.
Come right up here, and we'll start by swearing again. If you've got any witnesses or anything you brought with you, we'll ask them to stand too.
Yeah.
So, you're just gonna raise your right hand and stand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
So, you got it.
Thank you.
Sit, stand.
You may sit, make yourself comfortable.
It won't be that long, huh?
No, maybe not. Whatever you're comfortable with.
Do I need to sign in here?
Uh, no. We're gonna have a record of you being here, requesting this variance, if that'd be good enough.
Sure. Okay, wonderful.
Alright, Tony, I'll let you go ahead and tell us what you're wanting to do and why you're needing the variance.
Okay, so what I'm wanting to do is I'm wanting to build a 1,300 square foot home with a septic system on a piece of property less than three quarters of an acre. It will meet the setback requirements, and it will meet the septic tank requirements, but it doesn't meet the property requirements that we have for Washington County. So, that's why I'm requiring the variance.
The property requirements are, you have to have one acre?
No, you have to have three quarters of an acre.
Oh, you have to have three quarters of an acre to have a septic tank?
No.
What...
You have to have three quarters of an acre, because that's what the books say you need. Septic system requires 1,000 square feet.
Okay, okay. 1,000 square feet...
How much property?
Not of the... of the property, 1,000 square feet of property?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, the variance is just to build a home?
Just on the acreage.
Just the acreage? Oh, I got that. I thought it was because of septic.
Added to.
Now, septic systems, as long as you're going within state Indiana right now, Washington County is mostly requiring sand-type systems, which are commonly referred to as Presby systems. So, for a three-bedroom, two-bath system, you need about 1,000 square feet with tank to put those in. So, kinda what's happened, I'll just explain a little bit. Years ago, when we put septic systems in, we'd have a 1,000 gallon tank, and we'd have 600 feet lateral line with perimeter drain, okay? It took a quarter of an acre to put that in. Now, because of the variations within the state, trying to keep any contamination groundwater, any contamination drinking water, any got to, you know, run off into neighbors' property, they've changed the systems to where now almost everything is either some type of sand system, a chamber system, or a direct discharge system. The direct discharge systems haven't taken, you know, taken heat too much right now, just because they're so expensive. They use UV lights, that sort of thing. Sand systems, these Presby systems, probably 90 to 95 percent of what we put in now is all that. Chamber systems, they require a little bit more property. They're a little bit cheaper to install, and you'd still need more property for that. But a Presby system, 1,000 square feet, so...
So, the variance is just basically because you have less than three quarters of an acre?
Yes.
That's why you have to have a variance to build?
Yes. I can still meet the setback requirements. I can still, in fact, I've already got the permit for the septic. So, everything I can get permits for, except for the building permit because of the land requirement.
Does anybody know where the three quarters of an acre... what's the purpose of the three quarters of an acre minimum? Do you know?
I do. I did the research. It goes back to 1983, and there again, the reason that they established the three quarters of an acre was because in 1983, they were using a 1,000 gallon tank for the septic system, 600 feet lateral with a distribution box and a perimeter drain. So, it required a quarter of an acre to do that. So, they figured that by the time you do that, meet your setbacks, get your driveway set, you know, you had to have three quarters of an acre. My argument has been, if you can meet the setback requirements and meet the septic requirements, then you shouldn't need three quarters of an acre. So, that's been my argument.
So, how big is the piece of property?
The piece of property is 90 feet wide and 190 feet long.
Where does that come out to?
I have no idea.
A little bit less than... okay, I'm just curious.
0.38 acres, isn't it?
0.375.
Okay.
Yeah. It actually had a trailer, two structures on it, and the septic system existing when I bought it.
Okay.
But it was in horrible, horrible disarray. So, and I cleaned it, I wiped it, so...
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions?
Well, I was just looking at the deed. This seems like it says it contains three quarters of an acre.
I don't think so. I have recorded, I don't know.
Unless it's just a part containing three quarters of an acre, more or less. So, did you get the dimensions from a survey?
I did not get the dimensions from the survey. I got the dimensions from the previous deed. So, and that was all done through Daniel Brown's office.
I might weigh in from a legal standpoint and just remind everyone that back in May, we had Chris Bowing from the Health Department come in and talk to us, and he pointed out that the state has passed some legislation that has basically removed the minimum acreage requirement. And even though we have ordinances that are on the books currently that have that three-quarter, if it was under a public water system, and one acre if not, they're saying in their legislation that that ordinance no longer has any legal effect. And we're kind of in a little limbo area now where we haven't, you know, rescinded that ordinance. But according to him and what I've read from the state, they're wanting to get away from that because they're wanting to encourage new technology, which might require less acreage, and you know, we've just heard that that's happened over the years. So, I just ask that that be taken in consideration when the voting members of the BZA consider this variance request. Thank you.
Yeah, that's good to know, because I was wondering, that's gonna be one of my questions, what's the state doing in these situations?
Mm-hmm. And that's outlined pretty well in the May meeting minutes, which you don't have before you, but you can go back and reference those. Anybody that needs a copy, I'd be glad to send them to you again. And I'm guessing since there's no neighbors here to complain, there's nobody objecting to...
They'll be tickled to death. They're tickled to death that I cleaned it up.
Well, good. It's always good. Yeah, it looked like a mobile phone before.
Yeah, it was the worst of the worst. I think that's the way Todd described it. It was pretty bad. I'll just put it this way, there were 41 trucks, loads taken to the landfill.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah, that's a big thing.
You say 41?
41 trucks.
Yeah, look at that.
Thirty-six hundred dollars in landfill fees.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, I see that.
Wow. Always good to clean up the county.
It was bad.
Everybody's property value in Canton just went up 10,000.
Let me build this house, it's gonna go up 20 percent more. I think they're gonna make me mayor of Canton with this.
Lucky you.
Oh, boy.
I guess we'll call for a vote if there's no other questions, or somebody would want to make the motion to approve or deny.
One question. Is that on city water there?
I'm sorry.
Is that on city water there?
It is indeed.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes, that was my concern.
A lot of curiosity, what if there was a well on the property? What does that, how does that factor in?
Well, if Chris Bowing from the Health Department has approved it for septic, knowing that there's a well there, we don't have an issue with it. That's his bailiwick, so we wouldn't question his decision as health director of the county if there was a well on the property.
Okay.
That should have been one of the steps through the process of getting the actual health permit, so...
Right. Alright, I guess I'll call for a motion then. Anyone wants to make the motion to approve?
I second you.
Okay. I made the motion, Denise second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
And say aye.
Aye.
Great. Any opposed? Okay. Unanimous approval.
Alright.
Congrats.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming in.
Alright, next order of business is James Pogolos.
Platts?
What is it again?
Platts.
Okay. Okay. I couldn't read very well. I thought there was another A or O in there.
Most people put a lot more letters in it than that.
Okay.
So, we'd like to administer the oath, and do you have any witnesses you brought with you today?
I have my brother and sister-in-law.
Okay, are they here for moral support, or are you going to ask them to come up and testify?
Me.
Okay. Alright, well, then everyone just stand and raise your right hand, please, that might be a witness. And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Do you wanna go ahead and kinda do the same thing, let us know what you're wanting to do and...
I purchased an acre of land, and I'm putting up an old home, and a garage on it. And I wanna put a driveway out to the street. Well, I was informed by the ordinance that I have to be 300 feet from the intersection that comes into my road. At this time, I'm 212 feet. That means I have to go 88 more feet, which takes me outside of my acre, and puts me onto my neighbor's lot. I have the permission from my neighbor to allow the driveway to put in, which now I'm 88 more feet of driveway than what I need. Now, the area that we live in is very minimal in traffic. There's very little children playing, hardly any pedestrians. And I'm just trying to get some relief for that 88 feet that supposedly I'm shot, so I don't have to go into my neighbor's property.
Is the driveway coming off of Plattsburg Road here?
Yes.
Had there ever been a driveway on this piece of property before?
Many, many years ago.
What's been, I guess... we would have to call you as a witness in order to...
He's my brother. I bought the property from him, so he's owned it for 19 years, 15 years, 16 years.
So, it was, was this an acre that he's carved out of his existing land?
Yes.
Okay, so it's never been separated by itself before, and with a home and a garage and a driveway, so this is all new?
No. Years ago, wasn't there a home there? Yeah, but that's many years ago. I don't know how long ago.
Travis, what's the blue square on this? We're trying to figure this out here.
That is, I think that says property. I think...
Can you... yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't you draw on this paper where that driveway, how that driveway's gonna go?
Okay, this is the acre.
Okay.
Blue square. Okay, there's Rooster Hill. The garage is right here. And I just wanna come straight out, which is almost perpendicular to this road here. I just wanna come straight out.
Because you're, because of the distance from the major section that I need, right?
Yes, and they want, they want 300, give or take.
Right.
So, I would have to come off of Plattsburg into the rest of my brother's property, and then come back around and come over to come in my driveway.
Yeah.
Now...
Okay, so that's 212 feet is from here to here, and you need 300, so that puts you there.
Right. Makes the 88 feet short.
And this belongs to your brother's property?
Correct. And like I said, this traffic, there's basically...
I know, but yeah, there's nothing.
Just out of curiosity, is there any reason you can't build the garage over here and put the driveway over here, or are you in the same predicament?
Well, my septic is back here now.
Okay, so septic is right here.
Correct.
Is the garage already there?
They just built it today.
They just built it today. Brand-new garage.
And I'm waiting for the house.
Okay, you went to come straight from here onto here.
Correct.
But the rules say you have to come from here to here.
Can you say that, Ryan?
Yeah.
And of course, the...
It's because of that intersection.
You know, I think the biggest concern is...
Okay, so he's already building the garage here and going here.
Yeah.
If there, I was gonna, this car park here, is that the driveway?
Yes.
So, they have...
So, they've already got theirs, yeah.
So, their driveway's already coming out to this road?
Their driveway comes out to the road. This is Randy or Donnie's, which comes almost directly across from mine.
So, there's actually driveway even closer to what you...
Yeah, but it was probably quite some time ago?
Yeah, their, probably our grandfather didn't, because they were all 21.
Yeah, I see, yeah.
And you just wanna come off there and just come straight out from your garage?
I can get to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Of course, the, you know, concern is always safety, where you got people, you would be stopping to turn in your driveway, and you've got, you know, theoretically congestion and a...
Okay, what's the visibility, what's the visibility?
You should have that sketch there.
Yeah, but it's hard to...
This is a lot, this is a lot of...
I, I looked at that.
Oh, okay, I thought maybe you didn't have a copy, that's fine.
This is Randy Brewer's driveway. He has a house here, and a trailer here. Right at the top of this trailer. That's where it starts going uphill, that's where you lose the visibility, because now it goes over that hill.
So you've got full visibility through here?
All the way.
And coming this way?
Yes. Yeah, there's nothing inhibiting here, but till the hill here, till it starts going back down again to...
Okay, so this is eighty feet here, so we're talking feet, 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 but to get up to there?
Correct. Last night, we kinda took a little ride in this driveway here. I believe it's this one.
And that looks closer in my eye of vision.
It's closer, but there's one that's right here.
There's several driveways out there.
Yes, 'cause it looks...
Yeah, well, this is the one that goes to the back for the power lines.
It almost maybe looks about the same.
And there's that one that's close, but like you said, probably grandfather did, and that's very close to that.
Well, that's, that's actually Randy Brewer's driveway. This is the, I, I moved your right.
Over to there, over to there, onto this right way, okay.
Correct. And then she has the driveway, which is Randy's daughter, in this home, comes right up. Plattsburg right here.
So what do you want, is the variance of the eighty feet, so you can go straight out, and rather than going onto brother's property?
Yeah.
I mean, if I have...
Just a logical...
My concern too is also the safety and visibility.
Right.
It's, it's wide open, yeah.
Just curious, I noticed in your written material, you said there's thirty to forty cars, how do you know that?
It's just a guess.
Oh, okay, I was just curious.
No, I didn't, I didn't sit out there with that little, that little...
Seems like a lot, actually, in that area.
The little air counter, it's just, you know, my umbrella, I used to eat, but, no, I didn't do that.
Sit down with a beer and get your clicker.
Yeah, I sit back up, up the yard a little bit further. Sit down.
I mean, is there, Travis, is there any reason, any concerns from the Highway Department or anything?
Jason, Jason didn't say anything, or, so.
Okay.
He just sent it down to us, but he didn't say anything past that, he didn't make any comments on it, so.
And based on our standards, I mean, we have three things to look at, won't be injuries to public health, doesn't appear to. Won't affect adjacent land, actually probably be beneficial for adjacent land, and practical difficulty, 'cause you'd have to put your driveway on somebody else, so it seems to me like you're... Good. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Any opposed? Okay.
Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Thank you. I buy drinks.
(laughing) Bourbon lounge across the street?
Yes.
Travis. Travis, uh, okay.
Prove it?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Thank you very much, thank all of you. Now I can order my home and get it delivered in two months.
Good deal.
Yes, thank you. You're welcome. All right, since we don't have any minutes to approve till our next meeting, uh, call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're good.
They're good. What's better than the one we...
Who seconded the motion? Was it, was it you, Brian? Okay, thank you. John David Lyles, who's on the planning mission now. Yes, we did. Came up to me last time after the meeting. He was...
Is that Lisa?
It was something...
Better than I'll probably...
Maybe it was the septic one. He was telling me that he had some sort of case, and he got an ordinance thrown out or something, and I'm like, well then, you should bring that up, and...
Yeah.
But if it's the septic one, it's irrelevant anyway.
I guess it would be.
Yeah. If he reminds me of it, I'll bring it up to you next time, because it's something we have to consider in a variance, I think we need a...
No, not. Is that your phone, John?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have even got out the door, I would use something, it's part of your body.
Oh, yeah, it becomes a permanent attachment, yeah.
How are you, sir? Well, yeah. You can sit there.
Everybody's gonna get in this.
See, look.
Good.
I know.
I'm gonna have to see if I can find something, there's someone in my house somewhere. I'll try to remember that.
I keep going, just, and putting the minutes together.
Oh, I don't remember, I could never remember.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think he said, what, did you say something about this? Maybe it was, maybe it was you, this, maybe it was Emily, maybe it was Emily.
You have the lady that was just here?
Yeah, I was just wondering, she is. I thought so, I thought she was just... No, I think she's actually... She is.
I might not understand what you're saying.
We have five.
Dr. Thomas, I think Travis and Todd are talking about that.
Pretty pretty. Could you read this little prayer, sir?
Thank you.
It's all right, that's what kids do.
I know.
Mr. Todd, if you care to lead us in a pledge?
I can do this.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order to welcome everyone, we'll start out with pledge and prayer, please stand.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray, gracious heaven, Father, we thank you for this day, the day that you've given us, Lord, we just praise you for that. Lord, I pray you'd be in this meeting tonight, Lord, help us to do business for the betterment of this community and our county, and most of all, to glorify you. In all we say and all we do, go with us, do this, not a pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, I believe the minutes of the previous meeting were emailed to you, but I'll give you all a minute to review them, and then I'll entertain a motion to approve. All right, does anyone have any questions about the minutes for the July meeting? If not, could I have a motion to approve and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Danielle, second by Emily, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. All right, Travis, uh, do you have any updates for, sir?
Well, we'll, we're possibly gonna have, you know, some more variances coming in for next month, but I don't, I don't really have much yet to update you all on, so... I'm not really sure, but...
Relating to setbacks, probably, or?
Well, yeah, possibly, there's, there's possibly two setbacks, there is possibly two relating to confined feeding.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I do wanna mention, I, I wanna thank Emily for all the extra work she's been doing for the board. I know she's putting in a lot of extra work preparing these maps for presentation for us, so I know she's been doing a lot of extra, I just wanna thank her for the board, so I just wanted to mention that.
And Danielle, too.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else, Travis?
That's all I got, thanks.
Okay, thank you, thank you for all you do.
All right, you're welcome.
All right, let's jump right in here to our homework, we're whittling away at this, hopefully we're gonna be able to see the light at the end of the tunnel, so... Emily, I'm just gonna kinda turn it over to you, and Danielle.
Well, I guess, all right, we have, I have Son, Andrew, and Danielle, I have Gibson, Holt, Franklin, Pierce, and Jackson, ready to do. Jefferson, Monroe, and Washington, they all kinda overlap in certain areas, so it's taking me a little longer to divide those out, get the subdivisions in, Salem, City Limits comes out, then my fringe comes out, so we have some more work to do on that. So these are the areas we have left. Pierce and Jackson appear smaller than the other ones.
Would you rattle those townships off of you, please?
That I have ready to go, or that we can work on tonight?
For today, yeah.
We have Gibson, Holt, Franklin, Pierce, and Jackson. We've already done Brown, Vernon.
Madison, Howard, Ozzie.
Yep.
So basically the eastern, so, yeah, southeastern area, south and eastern of the county, and then we'll come back to the center at the next one, if we can get these done.
So Andrew has the map of the way we've been going.
How about, yeah, how about with Jackson?
Jackson's next, okay. Get my crayons out. Okay. Most of us is ag. Okay. So we're gonna start on the right-hand side at section six, you guys have the ones that we showed last time, there's two subdivisions in that area. Through the red dotted lines. The rest of it appears to be farm ground, but that's also along Big Springs Road, if anybody knows that area very well.
I'm just curious about the subdivision designation, does that mean we're not, um, including that in our classification?
That'll be zone, those are zones separate, um, as R1, so I just wanna head and mark those ahead of time.
Oh, I thought R1 was something else.
So I have that down here.
We have our designation.
On this paper that got handed to me last time, it says R1 subdivision.
Oh, okay, all right.
But I could be wrong, so, by all means. So, is it okay with zoning the rest of that as ag? Does anybody know any businesses that are along that area?
Uh, quick back, maybe I don't know where we're at, I said, I do see section six, subdivision in the top.
Nope.
Top right corner.
Left side. If it goes this way.
Which map are we looking at?
Oh, it's the top left, okay.
Top left. There's two sixes, 'cause Jackson takes up two different township lines.
Is it possible to get a copy of, uh, the township map that's got your subdivision, uh, markings on it?
Yeah, I thought we had that, but I can't find.
Oh, you know what, we've got two of them, you gave us that last time, and then I, for some reason, I had one that didn't have them.
Yep. Yep, Danielle has one that didn't have, and she passed those out, and then I took time before last meeting to mark all the subdivisions down and made copies, so that way we didn't have to do stuff.
I'm looking.
It's already got the subdivision.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're fine. Yeah, it bothered me a bit. I live out that way, I don't really think there's a whole lot going on out there, but.
Were there any businesses other than a couple in downtown Martinsburg? Uh, Billy Martin Store and, uh, Marshall Sales, I guess those are the only two.
And there's a fire department.
Yeah, fire department.
What's this in, in section eighteen, part of it's marked, part of it's not?
This is the subdivision, and this could be, but it's not recorded as one.
Okay.
So I didn't mark it, I only marked what was recorded as a subdivision.
Gotcha, okay.
But it also just could be a lot of pieces that have been split.
Do you wanna just tell everybody else what you just told them?
If you look at section eighteen on the map, down here, I'll hold it this way, in this area. Where this red is, is a reported subdivision. Everything that's labeled is recorded. The area around it is very congested as well. That's not a recorded subdivision, that's just a highly congested area. It could be a unrecorded subdivision, or it could just be parcels that have been divided off that many times and people live that close together. Over the years.
I mean, that was one of the first areas that got hit when it was started.
Yeah. So.
So it could be just a matter of about anything, really.
Yep. So I'm gonna turn this way again, you guys can all look again, these pictures are easier. You turn your paper this way, this section six on this top left-hand corner is where we're gonna start. There's two section sixes, we're gonna go to the left, start left and go this way.
Oh, yeah. I saw six, oh, yeah.
That would be Township four. This line right here divides into another township, that's Township five. Doesn't really affect anything, but you'll see double numbers on here when we start in a minute. So this six is what we'll start with.
I jumped ahead, didn't I?
You're okay. And that's Big Springs Road and part of West End Road. And I don't drive that way often, but when I do, I think it's just a lot of, some farm ground and some little farms in that area, I haven't really saw any big doings out there lately, so.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this whole area is a lot of homes.
Yep.
So we're doing them section by?
Section by section.
It looks like all.
Ag, all ag, section six?
Yeah.
Works for me.
Except for what's marked.
Yep.
Set for the subdivision?
Correct.
Yep. So then let's move to section five, right next to it, that's gonna be West End Road, it comes into Shank's Hill Road off of one thirty-five, which would be one thirty-five south.
Judging by the acreage size, I'd say the same thing for ag on that one as well.
Yes. If everyone agrees, we'll go ahead and move along, okay, making that ag. Section four next to that, that's gonna be the other end of one thirty-five, it's gonna be Dutch Creek Road, part of Ol Palmyra Road, and Buffalo Trace Road, again, I think that's.
There's no, nothing on Iowa in that section either, I was thinking.
I don't think so either, I think some of that is over, if it is, I think it's, um, a confined feeding, which falls in ag anyway, so.
All ag, section four.
Yep. Section three is gonna be Dutch Creek Road again.
Yep.
Okay, section two has subdivisions in it, in the bottom, that's in the red. Other than that, you're looking at pretty big pieces there. It's Dutch Creek Road coming into Bush Road. You're getting closer into Martinsburg area.
Ag.
Okay. We're going into section one, it's hard to see, but the whole west side of that is a subdivision. So the east side is what isn't a subdivision.
Do you, do you know anything about that being subdivision there, I'm just curious, can you kind of familiar with the area?
Um.
How did one, I mean, all those parcels have never been out by the same developer?
I don't know off the, off the top of my head, but I see a couple names on there that jump out to me, and that would be, um, a big name developer from back in the day. So I don't know if he just bought up the farms and divided it or not. But I could look up what subdivision that is in my office, I looked it up that day, but.
I'm, I'm just curious.
Yeah. I think they're separate subdivisions, I think there's more than one there, and they just kinda like link up, yeah.
I don't know.
So these are some of the very first that hit the county, so probably long before, they've been long before you were born.
Yeah.
So I'm, I don't mean that, but it, they started a long time ago.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. And I don't, I'm really of no help on this side of the county, I don't know much about closer on to Martinsburg, besides like right in town Martinsburg, so.
Open for suggestions.
Oh, I guess also Martinsburg is in, right, is Martinsburg is included, right, 'cause it doesn't have a town, they don't have a town board, do they?
No.
So Martinsburg is included in the county ordinance, 'cause they don't have a town board, so they won't be exempt.
But all of, all of Martinsburg is gonna be in section twelve, not, not more.
Yep, so just to keep that in mind.
Is, do you think the south, the southern border of section one is, uh, well, the, right above the word Martinsburg?
This. Yes, they're longer sections, they're correction sections.
I think that's all ag in section one there, other than that.
Okay. So then we're gonna go to the second, section six, in the other corner. That'll be Voiles Road, Newland Road, Level Road, and Borden Road all coming in there together.
Same thing.
Yep.
I mean, it has the potential to end up like some of this other in the future. But as of now, it's not.
Okay. We'll just go down below that, we'll hit section seven, so straight south of where we just were. We'll go ahead, where, um, one of the big properties is Scott and Ann Lou, or Monte A Sanders.
So six is ag?
Yep.
Okay.
So then sevens below that, and then we'll go back the other way.
Sorry, I'm distracted trying to figure out Robin Road up to Voiles and where all these, uh, this little red part is, I'm like, oh, that's across Voiles Road, okay.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Okay, so where are we at now?
We're gonna go south, like south of section six into that seven.
Section. Oh, okay, yeah, really congested area.
Yeah, it's, that's ag.
Yeah.
Then we're gonna go west, that would be section twelve, that is where Martinsburg is located.
So, uh, Dan, so we have your map, which has the, the subdivisions.
Yes.
The map Danielle printed has the old Martinsburg.
Layer on it.
Layer.
And that's what we'll do is the.
I think that that, that as a minimum.
Can I see that? Ooh, can we share it, Kevin?
Z, uh, R2.
Okay, let me draw it in over here. Okay. I got that put on this map. And that works good, 'cause that'll coincide whenever Connor gets our map. Is there anything else that kinda lays outside that area of Martinsburg? There in the farm, I wanna say it's farm ground, but.
I would just say maybe to the west, but everything to the west is in a subdivision, so.
Yep.
I don't know that it would be necessary.
Okay. So we'll call it ag.
Outside of the R2 area?
Yeah.
Okay.
So on to section eleven, still going west. There's a little bit of a subdivi- subdivision in the northeast corner. That's marked on your guys' maps. And then.
Yeah, everything else is ag there.
Okay. Section ten. There's a subdivision in the southeast quarter. I think the rest would be ag as well, okay? Section nine, that's Martinsburg Fire Road, still is just where we're following, and part of Martins Road.
Ag. Yep.
Section eight. South Liberty Church Road, Palmyra Lake Road, meets up with one thirty-five. And I don't think on one thirty-five, there's anything right through there.
No, no business.
Yeah.
What's double A properties, does anybody know? Double A properties?
Um, no. Section seven.
Ag, yep.
Okay, going south, section eighteen.
Ag. Yep.
Section seventeen, there's a subdivision marked on the maps.
Still nothing on one thirty-five south, I don't remember, I don't think so.
I don't think so right there, that's where the Quarry Beach, uh, farms are, but other than that, I don't think there's anything right there, and then that leads you into Harrison County.
Yeah.
And I don't really think there's a whole lot going on out that way either. Section eighteen appears to be ag, or section sixteen, sorry.
Oh, I was like, wow, we.
Appears to be.
Move right along.
Ag. Fifteen.
Same.
Yep, it's all ag.
And fourteen, there's a subdivision along the south side of Bethlehem Church Road. And I don't know this area that well, so I'm up for all recommendations and suggestions.
Yeah, other than that, it's sag.
Thirteen.
It's all ag.
And eighteen on the end, the second eighteen, um, you have a subdivision in there, again, this congested area in the northeast corner. But wasn't a recorded subdivision that I could find, so.
So that unrecorded spot, is that, is that supposed to be, will that be still ag?
If it's just housing, that would be the.
But it's not a, residential, so, yeah, so then that section ought to be R1 that's not marked, right? Is that what you're telling me?
So the one like in the upper right-hand corner of eighteen?
Yeah. Yeah. I think it, since it's already pretty well delineated out, well, I'll just go ahead and mark it R1.
Yeah. I agree.
Everyone else in agreeance? Yeah. I'll put a note on here to send it whenever I talk to Connor. If that's okay with everyone.
Yeah, that's fine.
When I send it to him. Do you want that, and then the rest of, like, the west of eighteen would be ag then? Where the bigger pieces are?
Yeah.
Okay, so give me just a couple of seconds, minutes to get this up to date. Okay, I've made a note. So what one would be next?
Pierce.
Okay. Now, this one. That's where it is.
Pierce.
And when you guys look at this one online, that you'll have on the colored one, it's probably the same. I've already went ahead and marked out in black that this is the town of the Tepkin. So that's excluded. It'll get removed. All the red is all the subdivisions that are recorded in the county. And to make things easier, just for me, when I read these numbers out loud, when I start in the left, around the right, and go the other way. 'Cause that's how we would do it in our office, and the numbers will then make sense when we snake down and around through that section, 'cause it's the whole.
So starting one, upper right-hand.
Starting with one. Yes. Okay, so upper right, section one is gonna be where you see Faraby. Um, there is two subdivisions in that area, they're marked. So then we would just have what would be left of that.
And that is ag.
Okay.
Next one looks like ag too.
Two?
Yep.
Two, three, four.
Two, three, four.
They look, all look like ag, yeah.
Yep, they are.
I'll go with it if you guys do. Five has a subdivision, and that hits one thirty-five, you're crossing both sides of one thirty-five right there. But again, besides the subdivision that's on there.
Yeah, seems like that'd be ag too.
Seems like it's ag.
Yep.
Then we go to section six. Pretty big pieces, besides in that lower part, you have a little bitty subdivision. Ag.
Ag, yeah.
Then we go down, we're gonna hit seven. All the red is the subdivision. What's left? Again, if you guys want, this is off Skylight Road. I don't know if that helps kinda make sense of everything off one thirty-five. Yeah.
It's the ag, but everything that's marked red.
Yeah, works for me, let's go to eight. That's the sides of one thirty-five and the north side of Millersana. I know from driving that way, that that's ag ground, 'cause that's going home.
Yeah, there's just land, yeah, ag.
Nine, you have the subdivision in the northwest quarter. But that's gonna be Blue River Church Road coming up through there.
All ag.
Yep. Section ten. Section ten. So one is four hundred acres, I would assume that would be ag as well.
Mm-hmm.
All ag, works for me. Eleven, there is a subdivision. In red.
Other than that, ag.
Okay. Twelve.
Same.
Is ag. Thirteen. That's coming into Pekin. Um.
Smaller tracks, but still no subdivision, so.
Yeah. So we could do. Ag, if that's okay with everyone?
Yep.
I'm trying to think of that intersection of Powers Road. Pekin.
Um. Isn't it?
Right there by Park Gazers.
Yeah.
There's nothing there. What's that little bit there, Sullivan Lane, see, we're, we're on what, thirteen fifty?
Yeah.
Right in there, between CSX and sixty there, or CSX runs parallel with sixty. There's how, that looks like it's mainly housing to me, in that section. Souders got thirty-seven acres.
Yeah, that's around where Jeff lives.
Okay, that's where, yeah.
Yeah, and then across like Sullivan Lane, that was, that's the other side of the Souders area over there. The only thing I can think of that might sit there is that little, what was like automotive shop. But it's sold, I think, and I don't know what it is now, I don't, but I think it sits right there.
Guess it's ag then.
Can that one parcel just be? Business? I don't know what they're doing with it.
You talking about where America?
I mean, it's the fact like the corridor we talked about, it used to say the future that the
Yeah.
that whole corridorism.
Yeah.
developed this, people wanted to expand.
So do you leave it ag now and then change it, to change it when that time happens, or?
I'll mark it, and then I'll put a note over here that this is that corridor question as well. I'll circle that little piece. Okay, I've made a note on it.
So, in our stuff with KK, when we did those charts, motor vehicle repair service. Boat sales and, or no, sorry, just motor vehicle repair and service. Car sales are all permitted in ag. So.
Yeah.
So if it stays as that, then it's fine. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Alright, deal, I'll put that it was an auto place, that way it would. Okay, so we're leaving all of thirteen ag? Yep. And then on into fourteen, you have the subdivision in the northwest quarter. And that's like Daisy Line. And Martinsburg Road. Intersection there. And I think that's all ag. Fifteen.
All ag.
Sixteen, you have a little bitty subdivision up there on Saw, on Miller Sawmill Road. But I'm thinking all that's ag, I don't think there's any
Yep.
business out in there. Seventeen. It's right there along one thirty-five.
Ag. Yep.
What's that, says Sawmill up there in the corner, is that actually, is that a road?
That's the road.
Oh, I see now, the word just almost takes.
Yeah.
Okay.
But there used to be a Sawmill there.
Yes.
Oh, I got his name.
Cecil Miller.
Yeah, Cecil Miller Sawmill. And then eighteen is on the other side of one thirty-five. And I think, besides that subdivision up in the northeast, I'm pretty sure that's all ag too.
Yeah, it is.
Down on into nineteen.
I guess Shorts Corner would be the only thing that.
Right there at the intersection, there's the gas station, that's being still for sale, that hasn't been.
And there's just a lot of.
It's just a little congested, a little.
There's a lot of
Yeah.
small parcels there.
Mm-hmm.
And that probably affects nineteen, twenty, or, I guess I don't know where the, is one thirty-five the line between nineteen and twenty?
Yep. It's gonna be the line, and then Vincent's Trail to Shorts Corner Road is gonna be here. Um. Your other way.
I would almost think that's, it's a smaller area in that intersection, could fall to the R two area, just because the way things are.
Just around where it's congested in there?
Yes, the way that things are already platted.
Anyone else agree?
Yeah.
There's already little houses right in that little.
That do, uh, R one?
Yep, or it'll be R two.
Oh, a platted town?
I think it used, was that where Short, the town Shorts Corner used to be?
The what?
Like Shorts Corner was like a
They've just always been in.
neighborhood type thing right there.
Yeah, I don't think it was.
So you're doing just that strip on Shorts Corner Road? Is that what you're saying?
In Vincent's Trail.
In Vincent's Trail?
Yeah. Just wanna cross the street there, it's very. That's also where like, um, old one thirty-five runs, so there's a lot of little pieces in there, where the road moved. I'll take it over with that, okay. Other than that, would nineteen be ag?
Yes, it would.
Yep.
Twenty. Um, I'm driving out through there every day, going home. It's ag.
Ag, yep.
Twenty-one, there's a lot of little houses out there, I'm one of them. But it's ag. There is a sawmill out there, a little bitty one, but he's not really doing a whole lot. It's, um, not very big.
So it doesn't affect him to keep it ag?
Yeah, it's on his property. If it's allowed. And I don't know if it's like a real running one, or if he just has it set up as one, but he cuts wood out there. Um, twenty-two.
That's ag.
Twenty-three. That's ag area. There's some confined feeding out that way. And then twenty-four, you have a little bit of it, that's not the town of Pekin.
At the top and the bottom?
Um, just the top. The bottom is the city.
Oh, twenty-five, I see, it's a separate.
And then twenty-five is the same, twenty-five.
Twenty-four is all new Pekin.
Yep, and then twenty-five, the southern part, so, southwestern part is county, the rest of it is the town of Pekin. And that's where we're headed to next.
Yep.
I'm by that, yep, I'm assuming.
Twenty-five is ag.
Ag.
Twenty-six is all ag, twenty-seven's all ag.
Can I ask a question about twenty-four and twenty-five?
Yep.
So, um. I'm not real familiar with all that goes on right there, but you know, within the town of Pekin, that area, we're just saying we don't do anything there, right?
Yep.
So.
There, whenever that comes up for like Connor to do, where the city limits are, they'll just like be blocked out, like they won't have anything with them there.
Okay, so, let's say I own one of those pieces of property there, and I wanna put a confined feeding operation there, they would go to the town of Pekin to get that.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I just mentioned.
Yep. So now we're over into twenty-eight.
Oh. Twenty-seven, ag.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-eight.
Ag. Ag.
Forty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty.
Ag, ag. They're all ag.
Twenty-nine, ag, thirty, we said ag.
Yep. Thirty-one, ag.
Thirty-one, ag. Thirty-two, you have a little bit of a subdivision, that rolls over into thirty-three. I don't think there's any businesses right there either, I think that's ag.
Yeah.
You're getting close to the county line there. Thirty-three. That's old Palmira Road. I think it's ag too.
Yep.
Thirty-four is again, old Palmira Road, there's a little bit of a subdivision. I want the rest to be ag.
Yep.
Thirty-five, you have a subdivision off Trainer Lane. And this is going towards three thirty-five. But I think it's ag too.
Same thing, yeah.
And thirty-six.
Oh, with that subdivision.
Yeah, subdivision in the southeast quarter.
Okay.
That's weird, I would have never thought that would be considered a subdivision.
Yeah, go ahead.
Somebody, somebody put me in the right spot, but on one thirty-five south, somewhere in vicinity of Shorts Corner, is the uh, s- uh, I don't know what the name of the business is, but you speak, Wilcox Towing Truck, they bought Wilcox Towing, but that's a junkyard in there, or salvage yard. Repair, yeah, it's a.
Auto.
Repair, so, that's fallen under what?
Where is that now?
That's gonna be south of the intersection there, and, oh, and also, god, you brought that up, there's Drifters Bar and Grill. They're right there together, somewhere, not right the other side. Yeah.
Big Spring Road, yeah. And then that's a, or not, that salvage, repair shop, that's what I wanna call it.
Is it Jack, Jack's?
I don't know what it is, but that should be, that should be in some, is that still called a drag?
Auto something. Yes, that should be a general business.
General business, okay.
No, hold on.
Or something.
It might fall in it, I wait for, this is when I call, phone a friend named Danielle, and she reads me what's allowed in there.
Well, based upon what we did with.
Yes.
So, what is it, what are we looking at again?
Um, the one is like a, a salvage yard, but maybe they also work on vehicles.
Yeah, they work on cars too.
And they have a towing business.
So, motor vehicle repair and service is permitted in ag?
Yes. Okay.
Um. I'm assuming that general business is going to be like our D one, D two, that was on the chart. And they're permitted in D two, but a special exception in D one, so I don't specifically know that. And then salvage?
That would have to go to, to the I, I'm sure.
Yeah, bar slash tavern does not have a permission, is not permitted in ag.
Where are you reading that from?
So, um, when KK was a consultant for us, there was a time that we sat down and looked at all these different uses, and she had big charted, and we looked there and said, that's permitted, that's not permitted, or it's a special exception. I just have that chart
I gotcha.
in my bag.
Okay.
From where, I don't know.
I think we made copies of it.
Yeah.
So it's not necessarily something official, but something you just kind of refer into generally.
This whole process, that was what we had discussed.
Yep.
Not that it's not set in stone, we can totally change it, but.
I see.
It's a good thing to.
Good, good piece of guidance.
I mean, the last thing we wanna do, you know, is change somebody's property, who they've been doing something for twenty years, and then all of a sudden, hey, we made a random decision that
Right, and I, and I think that's just where the grandfather comes in, like, I don't think that, my understanding is it wouldn't, it wouldn't change that, if that property was to sell.
Then it would.
Then it initially would.
Gotcha. That's the intention?
Then, then at that point, it's personal interference, that, that's my understanding, um, don't.
Okay.
So then Drifters would be in ag, right?
That's what it's in.
But then, okay, I'm, I'm good with that, I just, just thought about it. Yeah.
Yeah. But.
And then the other one ha- is a repair, a repair business, which is for ag, but what about a salvage business?
No, the salvage.
So I would consider that whole, that whole area there, that that's in as salvage. Even if they do repair, cause I mean, just look around, I mean, you've driven down by there, and I mean, got cars scattered everywhere. Yeah. But anyway, I don't want. Yeah. I don't want to belabor that.
Would that be allowed in general business, a salvage area?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay, that's what you said earlier. Okay, gotcha.
Um, as a special exception, there's not anywhere on our list that
Yes.
that I have that says that a junk slash scrap metal yard slash salvage yard is permitted. It's only a special exception under I.
Okay.
It has a ten acre minimum lot size.
I can see that, cause we're being.
I know that, I know that that area was surveyed. Because they wanted to be sure that those cars didn't cross the property line of the neighbor, and a fence was put up between them and the neighbor, I know that's been done. Um, but I don't know how big that piece is, and I could go look, but I don't know how big it is. Like in a new grand father den, so.
It's gonna be grand, yeah.
Yeah.
All, all over, right, and all that, well.
I think it's that fifteen acre piece though, that's on there, that RG fifteen, I think that's it.
But I guess making that area I.
Yeah.
Leads it to the idea that that's what we intend that area to be. Not necessarily what it currently is.
Yes.
In my opinion, I'm not speaking for anybody, but I vote that that's an ag area where that's just happens to be now right now.
Yeah. Happens to be there.
I don't intend for that area to grow into an industrial area full of
Exactly, yeah, good point.
scrap and junk yards.
Yeah. And if you zone it as that, that leaves them the.
And I feel like if you open that up, then what's, what's to say that property next to it doesn't say law, I wanna be reading?
Right, yeah.
And then you end up with.
Not that it can't be in the future anyway, but it just opens up.
Anyway. Yeah.
Not that it's.
Good point.
I'm fine with it, either way, I understand.
I agree.
We would have had to move on, I just had that thought.
Oh, you're good.
Going down, it was there, so.
I thought about it too soon when I was.
Yeah. Alright, so Pierce is also completed. Which one's next?
Both.
We can probably do one.
Both, it's small, don't you?
That would be me.
Oh, this one, I could say a big page for me. Alright.
Oak. Starting with six?
Oh, just as a, I hold my, I'll play the light right here, okay, holding up my picture. All the red again, subdivisions. Over on the left, I've drew out Pekin Town limit again, that'll be cut out, and all of the yellow I've colored in. To my knowledge, I got all of the forestry, but I could have missed a piece, if I do, let me know when I've colored it, but I tried to do that all.
You don't have as much statums to look at this. Interesting.
So let's start on the left and go right. So we're gonna start
Six, top left.
In six, top left. You have a subdivision in the middle. Again, this is Eastern School Road. Um, and like north of Motzinger Road, just to give everybody like a location of where you are.
All ag other than that.
Moving on to five, you have two subdivisions in that area, but a lot that's been divided up.
Yeah, you've got such small pieces, you almost.
Do you remember what the, so these blue pieces ha, what the minimum size on those plans to show, I think.
I think it's five.
Five, so.
That would make sense, 'cause that's what we own, over their own Pleasantview Way, that's about the size that it shows there.
So if it's less than five, it's just gonna be a great loss.
So those are all pretty small. Well, not all of them, but just those two sections, pretty small pieces.
Well, I, I guess in my mind, um, five acres is still big enough parcel to not have any lot, not require any kind of lot variance for anything.
Yeah.
I think that, I think the way these plans, they make them look smaller, but if you were to stand there, you, they'd really be, and you lived there, you'd know.
Yeah, yeah, when you're cutting the grass, it's a lot.
Spread out, spread out.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, on your neighbor.
Right, right.
I, I think, I don't know if those need anything different to this ag.
Okay. Everyone okay with making that ag?
Yep.
Moving on to four, there's subdivision in there. Reference, everybody was on the board then, that's that Forest Grove subdivision. David Allen, we approved years ago, that's where that's at.
So ag.
I believe so.
Yep.
Three.
All ag.
Two. Yeah, in yellow you have the state pieces.
The rest ag.
Yep.
One.
Yeah, it's all ag.
Then we're hop, back up to six, that next door, red is the subdivision, yellow is the state forestry. That's Blue River Road and Casey Hollow Road.
Yeah, it's ag.
Five, majority of it is the state forestry. No, I missed a piece, that's one, go ahead.
All ag.
Yep.
What's that part of? Like Hoosier National Forest, or I don't think that comes down that far deep, does it?
Um, I honestly don't know.
Huh.
I honestly didn't know how much, notice how much the state owns, and so I started doing these.
That's what I totally, some like, it's surprising to see how much the state owns right there.
Yeah.
It's part of the Clark, uh, Clark County, over toward Henryville.
Oh, Clark Forestry, yeah, oh, okay.
There's more of it in Scott and Clark County than there is Washington County, it's pretty big.
Ah.
We call it the Henryville Forestry Business.
Right, yeah.
We.
Interesting.
It's old timers, call it the Henryville Forestry.
Section four. You have subdivision in the northeast area. Other than that, I think that's ag.
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna go back to the left. Next row, seven, the whole northeast quarter is a subdivision.
Chris McGee.
Yeah.
And the rest is probably ag.
Yeah.
They're pretty big pieces.
Yep.
Yeah, but when I see the word development, well.
Yeah.
It doesn't stir good emotions.
Section eight, there's a little subdivision up in the northeast.
How long, just back to seven, how long has that been Chris McGee, like, how long ago did he do that, is that recent?
Hmm.
Thirty years.
Not since I've been here.
Oh, you're kidding?
Yeah, not since I've been here.
Okay. Anyway.
Eight's good.
Nine.
Nine's ag.
Ten.
Ten's ag.
There's a subdivision up there, but it's colored in.
Yeah. Lake up there too.
Eleven is forty.
Is there anything, like, is it pay or private lake, or is it any, I guess any business associated?
It's private.
Oh, okay.
I wonder if the private, that's, uh.
Viral genes.
Yeah. Eleven, you have part of the state up in the north. That's along Mount Zion Church Road and Hickory Grove Road.
There's a lot of houses up through there.
Yeah, there is.
It's, it's more of a strip, but all the way to one sixty, it's.
So we're gonna call it ag?
It's still ag.
Sorry.
Twelve?
She's plodding us along. Probably all ag.
You're welcome.
It's a bag.
Seven is majority of the state.
Seven. Oh, we're on seven.
It jumps over here, it's across, it's a township line.
Gotcha, yeah, ag.
Yep.
Eight, ag.
Ag surrounding the state.
Yeah.
Yeah. Give me a second, I'll color it in. I'm gonna have to get a new highlighter, this one's given out. Okay, jumping back to the left. We're at eighteen.
That's ag.
Now on seventeen, that gray area in the northern part, that's a lake, that is an unplatted subdivision. Then people live there, and they have like access to that lake.
So they're around the lake?
Yes, now that's not a recorded subdivision, however it is a subdivision. So I did not color it in as a subdivision. 'Cause it's not recorded, oh, thank you. But it is a housing, I don't know what you guys wanna call it, it's a housing addition, I guess, if it's not a recorded subdivision.
So does that nonprofit own the lake?
Um, no. I think that's Peekaboo.
That's Peekaboo.
That's Peekaboo Lake.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Why, why was it never plotted?
Oh, no, you can ask Daniel Blaine, he's been having a good adventure up in Peekaboo lately.
So why don't we call him, why don't we have it plotted?
Well, that was before me, so I don't know.
Long time ago.
There's really nice houses in there though, I'm told.
It's all paved.
Mm-hmm.
Roads are all paved and everything.
Is that the only have a gate to get in?
Yeah, it's John Jones.
Yeah, they gotta, they gotta a gate to get in out there, so.
Yeah.
I don't know how y'all wanna zone that necessarily, we could probably.
Well, it's a subdivision.
Sounds like an R one to me.
That's right.
Works for me, if it works for you guys, I just wanted you to know, I didn't mark it yet, 'cause it's not a recorded one. I didn't wanna jump ahead.
Go on.
Is there any reason to, to, uh, mark more, like the, I don't know, very many acre pieces to the west of there, I mean, that's, it's part of it?
Yes. I mean, we can. It's up, it's up to you guys, does that work?
Okay.
Okay, give me just a second.
We're doing what now with the?
That, where you, where you mentioned the lake site nonprofit, that's just that's, I would call that part of the subdivision.
Don't we have color? Okay. Moving on.
And the rest is ag on that one?
Yep.
Oh my gosh, this is such a fresh highlighter, okay. It was, I was like barely able to color that one.
Be careful with that.
Yeah, got excited, sorry. Section sixteen.
Ag.
Okay. Fifteen.
Ag.
Ag.
Fourteen.
Ag, yep.
Thirteen.
Ag.
You just act like you know this area. Okay, eighteen.
Ag. Yeah, on eighteen, you're right there on Honey Run, uh, there's a lot of houses in.
There there are.
But in there, right between the state property there on Honey Run.
But those numbers below it is the acreage of those parcels, so eleven, eight.
Yeah, they're not small.
You're gonna have to wear different glasses.
It's not like they're
Yeah.
just lots, they're actually.
They look small, but.
Acreage, yeah. It's all relative.
I guess the next one's ag too, seventeen's ag too.
Yep.
So everything outside of state's ag?
Yeah.
Going back left, the west side of nineteen is Pekin City Limits, the east side is what we have to work with. And it looks like East Washington School, but I'm pretty sure we said that could fall on ag, so.
That's where the school is.
Yeah.
So that's ag.
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty-one.
Appears to be ag, they're pretty big. Twenty-one. There's a little part of a subdivision, but twenty-two. Those are mul, that's not one subdivision, they just kinda touch in there, there's more than one. Um, but the rest of that. Ag if it is, I don't know that area as well.
It's all, it's all ag.
Ag.
Everything out there, it's pretty wooly.
So we go twenty-three, twenty-four, nineteen, all ag?
Yep. Hills, hollers, and lots of trees.
And then back down to thirty, again.
Till a tornado comes through.
Yeah.
Majority of the west side is Pekin, and then the east side is not.
Oh, Pekin Road.
I guess I don't know where the
Look at, uh, the color map that Danielle has, it should be in yellow.
Pretty much almost right down through the center of nineteen and thirty.
Yes.
Yeah.
Except for the bottom corner.
So it's Boyle's Road, pretty much, is that right?
No.
No, not that far over.
Here.
Although there is that health clinic there at Boyle's Road in the highway.
Oh, yeah, the one that closes down up in back.
Yep.
But it would fall under ag, right?
And that's really, I don't know, there's much else out there.
And then there's the
That right across the road.
That business across the road, yeah, used to be a sawmill, but it's not after the tornado.
Right, well, you've got
I don't know where it is.
Lanham's up, up there, it's got a sawmill, but then that, that, used to be a sawmill, but then now it's turned into a pipe fitting or something like that there up there.
Yeah, yeah.
Isn't there a gas company up there, is that in Pekin Limits?
That's in the Pekin, so, uh, I guess what I'm saying is everything if you're on sixty, everything west of Boyle's Road is Pekin Limits.
Yeah.
I think that, uh, the pipe has been the gas, well, the gas one, I don't know.
And the gas went down a little, like
Yeah, it's not.
and it's to the there's a gas com, the gas company?
Uh, it used to be a
Yeah, there's a gas.
well, there's a gas company down there?
Yeah, is that still gas?
Uh, I can't remember.
I don't, I don't use it, but I know what's in there.
Yeah, we don't either.
I don't know where it's at, but I know it's over there.
I know where it's at now.
Yeah, we.
It's between, it's between Lanham's.
But there is one, we've used them before.
Yeah.
And, uh, what used to be, that, before this tornado took it out.
Is it at the intersection there, Old Pekin Road and Hurst Road? That little triangle piece there, is that the gas?
Yeah, it's in there. Somewhere.
Act like I really know Pekin, but I try not to do it now. I go to the post office. It's the only place I go.
Good for you.
I know, it's the only place I go.
Linda's not there today.
I know, trust me.
You know, trust you, yeah.
Twenty-nine. What?
Is that a good teller?
So we're gonna say ag for I guess my question is, there's there's an, everything in the southwest, southeast corner of is it ten, thirteen, off third um is fairly developed, like it's the outskirts.
But it's all gonna fall under ag, if it's not part of the town, and if it's not a subdivision, then it's gonna be under ag. Even if it's a
I'm not, I'm not so sure that there's not some industrial industry right there.
You tell me.
Probably, probably to Daniel's point, it's probably a good place for industry.
Well, there is, but it's grandfather.
Right, but if I'm thinking, the way I think about it, is in the future, if I want industry or business to come to Washington County, would that be a good place for it to happen? Because they already have the highway infrastructure, I'm
Right.
using words I don't know that I.
If they wanna sell it as a business.
That might be a good place
Right.
to do that.
Right.
Because it's on the main road, it's close to the town.
You tell.
It's been a business for
Yeah. Oh, yeah, there's no doubt.
Um, that would be my only but I don't wanna not let, it doesn't mean if somebody's using it as a farm or wants to purchase it as a farm, I don't necessarily wanna prevent that either, so.
Multi-use.
Yeah, but if you, if you pluck out those two businesses that you're referring to, everything else is residential around.
I think I've, I think there's four or five, uh, businesses in that area right now, accordingly.
Can I come up over your shoulder?
What?
Can I come up over your shoulder?
I can't say exactly where, but is there other parcels? So this is Boyle's Road.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know what that is, but I don't know what that is, it's like towers.
Yeah.
Well, the city garage is close, uh, town garage is close to there.
So I think in my mind, this, this square is maybe a question.
Is that, we could do this one, this can they still use this as a farm ground, is that?
Yeah, sure.
So, on our paper, um, for the Bs and the Is, the business and industry, row crops are permitted in both. Um, let's have that sheet in my head, and then when it comes to livestock production, whether they require an I to permit or not, nothing is listed. Doesn't say permitted or special exception. Nothing is listed, does it say permitted or special exception?
All right, corporate. I think it's some, I don't, I don't know that we wanna say it's an industrial zone, but I think. That high shape area could be. That was a, sit on general business at least.
Yeah.
I really didn't realize all of that wasn't in the county.
So you're talking about like at the corner of Boyle's and sixty, and then down Boyle's a little bit?
Yeah, so Boyle's and sixty, everything to the northeast.
It'd be between like Boyle's. Sixty and Old Pekin.
Okay.
That's to the north of that. Yeah.
We got some pretty big, like twenty one acres, thirteen acres. So that's to the east of Boyle's Road.
I think.
So what are we proposing making that?
Maybe like a general business is over.
But, but they can still use, do row crops and pasture, that type of stuff, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and we can change this to.
And that would be no brain, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I can understand why you didn't put a special exception for animal feeding operations, like bear. But I don't see why we couldn't raise, like cattle or sheep or goats, I don't see that.
Being a problem.
In a vicinity area, right?
So let's kinda make that a blue, maybe?
Blue.
You want a blue?
Yeah.
Haven't used this one yet.
Which is what?
General business.
General business, I guess.
Or we can do industrial, it's orange.
I don't know.
Depends how.
Industrial seems to be more restrictive.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
And so.
Cause I always get the image with industrial, you have environmental issues, and you definitely don't want that like right next to your cattle and crops and.
Okay. Color it in, again, this isn't like holding anybody to anything, it's just a. Just a highlighter for now.
I know to me, when we made this chart, it was hard for me to see specific instances where those might, but now that we have.
No, we're looking into it, it makes sense.
It makes me under.
Yeah, we probably should have done this at the same time.
I think, I think we need to add.
Yeah. Yeah.
Probably, probably shouldn't should have though.
Yep.
Should have, would have, could have.
Um, also in, I don't know what section it's in, but there's the, um. I'm gonna call it the container, cause I don't know what it is, but it's like the barrels, the classic things going right into Clark County.
Is that, is that in Washington County?
Yeah.
No.
I thought that was up.
Isn't it?
Past Pekin.
Isn't it like section?
Down the bottom here, down the bottom of there hill.
Okay, nevermind.
I don't think it's in the county.
No.
I don't think so. There is one in the county.
I thought so. I'm just kidding, I only thought it was because there was, it was surveyed once.
Oh, excuse me.
It's alright Kevin, we can still be friends.
It's, uh, it's in twenty nine.
Man. And I. It could probably be ag, but I mean, I'm just rolling off of that, it is right there. I don't know what it is, but they have, like barrels and.
There's, uh.
It is.
I know.
Used to be.
Yeah.
Four parts is enough to call it general business.
And I know, I think there's an apartment, I think there's an apartment in it, I think.
I know up on top of the hill.
Yeah, it would be general business for sure.
And if it sells, that would, I mean, is that like, like Danielle's thinking, for the future, will we always want that parcel to be general business?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
If you wanna call it infrastructure, there's a lot of concrete bays there and.
Yep.
That's in Washington, that's in Clark County.
It's close.
It's right at the end right there, isn't it, like right at the end of the county line?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just gonna mark on here, and then I'll get the, uh, parcel cards to go with it, by the way, it works. Let me know what this is. Okay, twenty eight.
That's all ag.
Okay, and our last one is thirty one, and there are some subdivisions over there. But the rest are like pretty big pieces.
As long as I can keep my horse.
I think we'll let you. Alright, that rounds up as Paul. And I'm not trying to take the lead of the meeting, but it's almost eight o'clock, so I don't wanna start right on.
Do I take that as a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Good call, I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your.
Sure made it easier.
Thank you for your support.